Welcome, everyone. Today, we have a notice to call the special city council meeting. City of Series today, Tuesday, May twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty four. I now call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
District one, Councilmember Casey.
Present.
District two, Councilmember Vera.
Present.
District four, Councilmember Martinez, absent. District three, Vice Mayor Silvera.
Here.
Mayor Lopez.
Here. And please stand for the invocation by Jeff Thompson from Big Valley Grace, followed by the pledge of allegiance. I believe he's in person. Welcome, sir.
You. I'm mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the honor of being here. Right? Father, thank you for you. Thank you for this day that you've given us. Thank you for the blue skies and sunshine. I guess that tonight, that as discussions occur and conversations happen, that you would give us your wisdom. We'd follow after you, and you give us your guidance. We thank you for this time. We pray in the name of Jesus. Amen.
We do have one proclamation, and I will ask the city council to step out with me, and this will be received by NAMI Club from Series High School. Are they here? Okay, here we go. Here. Claring May twenty twenty four as Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas there is a proven connection between good mental health and overall personal health. And whereas mental health illness affects almost every family in America. And whereas people from with mental illness recover if given the necessary services and support in their communities. And whereas people with mental illness make important contributions to our families and our communities. Whereas millions of adults and children are disabled by mental illness every year. Whereas only one out of two people with a serious form of mental illness seek treatment for his or her mental illness. Whereas stigma and fear of discrimination keeps many who would benefit from mental health services from seeking help. Whereas research shows that the most effective way to reduce stigma is through personal contact with someone with the mental illness. And whereas good mental health is critical to the well-being of our families, communities, schools, and businesses. And whereas greater public awareness about mental illness can change negative attributes and behaviors towards people with mental illness. Now, therefore, I, Javier Lopez, mayor of the city of Series, behalf of the city council, Vice Mayor Brett Silvera, Councilmember James Casey, Rosalinda Elviera, and Daniel A. Martinez hereby proclaim this month of May twenty twenty fourth as Mental Health Awareness Month. Congratulations.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for inviting at the NAMI Club on campus at Series High. We brought a few students with us. We have an NAMI Club already for a few years. And we have noticed a change in our culture in our campus. So our goal or our mission is to create awareness of mental illnesses and also eradicate the stigma of mental health by providing education to our students and to our families. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Citizens Communications. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings, adopt the rules allow no more than five minutes Resolution two thousand and seven one oh six. Members of the public interested in addressing the city council during the special meeting may address the items which have been described in the notice of the special meeting in accordance with Government Code, Section five four nine four. Anyone wishing to address the city council must adhere to the rules of decorum. The rules of decorum are posted outside of the chamber doors. Is there anybody in person? Like to make a comment on the items on the agenda? Hey, Pratt, just so you know that the items on the agenda are the only topics that you can reference in this section. So anything outside, because it's a special meeting, those are the rules.
Oh, basically, this Dave Pratt is Series, and basically, I want to talk about the dog park again.
So unfortunately, because it's a special meeting, we cannot talk about the dog park, only the items on the agenda. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Any emails? Okay, thank you. This portion is now closed. Moving on to conflicts of interest. Is there any declarations of conflict of interest? Seeing none. Moving on to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be acted upon by a roll call vote. Is there any council members that have an item they would like to pull? Any members of the public have an item they would like to pull? Seeing none. Bring this back for a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Hi.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries four with one absent.
Thank you. Moving on to our public hearing. Resolution number twenty twenty four, considering an appeal of the planning commission's approval of conditional use permit, application number twenty three twenty three, CUP, Erematito, filled with Quastel Corporation, filed by Quastel Corporation, Pedro and Canadia Marquez, Nelson Gomez, located at thirty twenty five and thirty one thirteen Crowes Landing Road, Series, California, APN fifty six fifty five thirty. And I believe this is to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Lisa and Vlakis Community Development Director. Tonight, we're talking about the appeal that was heard by the planning commission on March fourth, two thousand and twenty four. At this meeting, the Series Planning Commission approved five oh to amend the conditional use permit twenty three twenty three with several revised conditions. I want to go over those revised conditions. The first would have been condition three BT three, which originally proposed at the mobile food vendor truck park. The condition, the condition proposed by the city was that the mobile food vendor truck would operate between the hours of eight AM and twelve AM midnight. The commission modified that condition to state that the mobile food vendor truck park could operate between eight AM and ten PM. The second condition modified, staff suggested that the night market could operate three nights a week until eleven PM. Mission changed that condition to read that the night market could operate three times per week until ten PM. The third condition, staff suggested that we did not need a separate TUP for every special event held at the flea market. The planning commission amended that condition to state that every special event would require a TUP, which means that they would have to pay for a TUP each time, and then we The final condition amended was that staff suggested that all sound systems, acoustic bands, or amplified music be stopped at eleven PM. And the planning commission changed that condition to read that all acoustic bands, amplified music, sound system would be stopped at ten PM. So they approved the project with those modifications to the conditions. Then a timely appeal was filed by the applicant on April eleventh, two thousand and twenty four, contesting those four changes to the original conditions. So per section eighteen thirty one forty, the series of the municipal code, it states that the city council can hear and decide on the subject of the appeal, giving full consideration to the entire entirety of the project. So you have the ability to affirm, reverse, or modify any portion of the action taken by the planning commission. Staff, however, is recommending that you uphold the original condition proposed by by staff for several reasons. When we routed the CUP, we asked police, we asked fire, we asked our reviewing partners if there were any issues with the hours of operation until eleven PM or midnight, and there was no opposition. Additionally, our code does not set hours of operation limits in our in the code, so we don't really have a limit. It would be more of a limit based on by our reviewing partners. Also, we do have a noise section that says that you cannot exceed our established noise. So there is a mechanism to penalize the applicant should they get noise complaints operating till midnight. So we have a code section that would say, hey, you're not making noise after hour limit. We could do something about that. So we felt it was still appropriate. Operate till midnight. If it happens to be a problem. And then with the TUP, staff didn't feel like it was necessary to have them apply for a TUP every time. Since the conditional use permit essentially covers all of the items that we review the TUP. So to do it over and over again would be essentially reviewing the same matters over and over again, and would really be an undue burden on So we feel upholding the original conditions is the best recommendation this evening, but the council has several options. You can order the filing of a notice of exemption, and then you can approve the conditional use permits, subject to the planning commission amendments of the condition. You could order the filing of the notice of exemption and then propose to uphold our original condition. Or you could order the filing of the notice of exemption and then propose the other changes you wish to the entirety of the application, or just focus on those. And then following the decision tonight, you would approve, deny, or modify, and we provided both an approval resolution and a So you have those options.
Okay, thank you. With that being said, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like a comment on the item? Members of the public.
Good evening, council members. John Warren here from the city of Series. I attended the planning commission sessions that involved these these changes. And I may not have liked how they voted on the additional use permit for the for the market out there. But it was a good decision that I think that they did make in considering all the things that were involved. Specifically, the hours of operation, they reduced those to a more reasonable time of of ten PM. And in light of the number of new homes that are going to be built around that market out there in the near future, there's going to be like ten thousand more residents, six thousand plus more homes. As we all know, at nighttime, noise travels a long distance and is amplified greatly. I believe in the in the paperwork that evolved, there is a term of seventy decimals at the property line of an individual's home, that if the noise or the music exceeds that, then it would not be allowed. But I don't know who's going to be there at eleven o'clock at night to measure those levels of sound. I discussed the issue with my hearing doctor. And she says, if you've got seventy decimals of unit of music at eleven PM at night at your property line, she says, you're not going to be able to go to sleep in your own home, and you're not going to be able to hear the television in your own house. That's how loud seventy decimals is. Higher is where your hearing becomes injured and affected around eighty or eighty-five decimals. So this is approaching that. And so reducing the time period seemed reasonable to me, and it's one of the things that I kind of suggested at the time. As for the conditional use permit, for the temporary or each planning of each event out there, I think it was reasonable that they come to the city and get a permit for each event that they want to have, because that way it can be reviewed. It may be repetitious, but if there's some problems from the previous ones or something that needs to be addressed, that gives the city a chance to address a future discussion of a certain event. Giving those folks out there basically carte blanche, seven day a week operation, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, with no insight on the events on each one that they're going to do from the city, I don't think is a reasonable thing to do. Night markets, three nights might be too much. You're going to have a lot of people living out there in the near future, and there's a lot of people that complain now on the east side of the ninety-nine freeway because of some of the loud music that takes place. We don't want to increase the problems. We want to try to contain the problems that may come forward. So I would ask that you folks consider approving what the planner, the planning commission did approve and the changes that they did make. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Anybody else has any comments?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and
Welcome.
Council. This is Nelson Gomez. I'm the attorney for the applicant, Mr. and Mrs. Marquez. I understand the concerns that Mr. Warren has. I want to make sure that the council knows that the the sound, the seventy decimals, is only for special events. Amplified music is not allowed with regards to the Grubhub or the food vendor sport, nor is it allowed in the market. Those are not a concern in terms of going to until eleven o'clock. Second question is that the other question that we have is that why are we going to allow the particular mission use permit with all these particular situations such as the temporary use permit? There are pages and pages of conditions that are outlined in this particular conditional use permit that limit the kinds of things that my clients can do and outlines specifically the kinds of things that they are permitted at each of these kinds of uses. So therefore, we believe that it's not necessary for them to apply and pay a fee of a hundred and twenty-five dollars at each of the times that they're going to have a special event, only because of the fact that they those particular conditions are already outlined and have gone through all of the departments. And all those departments have, in fact, signed the condition that they want my clients to live under. So we concur with staff. We would ask that they be granted the original conditions on the CUP upheld by this city council. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Is there anybody else? Did we receive any emails?
There were no emails received.
If there is no additional comments, we will now close the public hearing and bring this item back for council for discussion, questions, and action. Council, I see Rosalinda has her mic pressed. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my first question is, I wanted to confirm if the hours are aligned the same as the Grubhub that we approved a few weeks ago in Service and Morgan. And then my second question is, from my understanding from reading it, and I just want to make sure I understand it correctly, there were only specific events that were already outlined in the conditions that are outlined in the permit, so they don't have to get a temporary permit each time. It's the ones outside of the permit that was approved that they would need to get the other temporary use permit, not the just so, I think there was like six specific events that were approved, if I read it correctly.
Correct. So to answer your first question, the Grubhub hour limits were set to ten PM, so the new hours are in line with the Grubhub. Originally proposed times would be outside of the And then the events listed, I think, I believe, and to be incorrect, the planning commission was referencing those outlined special events to require not just events outside of those listed, but those specific events.
That's the action that the planning commission took. The council can specify and make it clear that in, if that's the council's desire to list out all the events, either all the events that it would be exempted from the conditions of a TUP or to exempt all special events, even though I don't believe that's the, that was the recommendation. It was a set list of events.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm, because I thought there was something specific, and I believe there was specific for some of it had to be related to staff timing. But also, there were specific ones that you were okay with that were already existing, that they didn't have problems with, which is why they specifically named those items. Okay, I just want to make sure that these ones were those ones that were okayed with staff. Thank you.
Mr. Casey, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is, in your presentation, you mentioned that if there are violations, it will be handled. We'll handle them. Do we have that spelled out? If they violate one time, it's no, it's a warning, second time, it's a fine, etc. Are we just going to wait to see how that goes?
I guess it's presumed that you have, by having a TUP, there's a general condition that says you have to adhere to the code, and the code has standards that say you must abide by your noise. You're not allowed to be a noise nuisance. So we have code enforcement that works evenings now. So if somebody was saying, hey, at eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock at night, or whenever they're exceeding those standards, even if it's within those hours and they're exceeding their noise standards, in theory, they're violating the code. Open themselves up for, you know, needing to be corrected. So there's a general condition that talks about abiding by Title eighteen, and Title eighteen requires that you don't be a noise. So whether you're operating out at midnight or at nine, if you're exceeding technically violated. They Oh, but it's applied. Code.
So hypothetically, they they violate the code, code enforcement tells them stop it. It's just a warning, okay? And then they do it again and again. It's just always a warning or what?
We have a process of revocation for CUP. So if they're continually found to be out of compliance of their CUP, we'd in theory revoke it. It would be a that hearing procedure for revocation.
It, the process would follow the same way that there's an approval of a CUP, so it would have to go before the planning commission. And then if anyone seeks to appeal that, then it could theoretically come back to the council.
Okay, so then the final question is this, you mentioned that code enforcement works at night now. So again, a hypothetical question, I'm the citizen, I call in to complain to someone, and no action is taken by the code enforcement to to a warning or an administrative anything. What happens to that citizen's complaint?
Maybe I might defer but as far as I know, when code enforcement receives a claim, they issue a warning, they receive a complaint again. I mean, there's steps and procedure.
What was the question?
There was a code complaint, and and someone said there, that, you know, because there's a noise device, you can download a noise device on your phone. If a citizen, it doesn't necessarily have to be the code enforcement officer. They take data on the phone. They're exceeding the noise standards. They file a complaint with code. We happen to have a code that's doing an evening shift. They may go out there and cite them, or they take in the complaint from the public. What's the process of? Yes, what are the steps?
So we take, we write a warning, that a hundred dollar ticket, a two hundred and fifty dollar ticket, and I believe a five hundred dollar ticket, and it would go back to you? Yeah.
I'm not sure you answered the question. The question is, I called in and I've complained. And nothing officially was done by the city. Does my complaint warrant an administrative claim or what?
Yeah, that's typically how code enforcement violations are noted. Their their citizen complaint saying, hey, this site has an ADU that was built that's out of performance. So then code goes out there and checks. So if a citizen said, every Friday night, they're blaring music and it's seeds a noise requirement, I would send, I would ask code to go out on a Friday night with a noise meter and and meter the noise for open a complaint. So that's how typical complaints are received by the city. They are citizen complaints, and then they're referred to code enforcement. I mean, I would, and I guess, I mean, I don't know.
Well, I guess, and first off, I want the flea market to succeed, you know. We've been working on their, whatever it's called, since the beginning of two thousand and twenty-two. We keep changing things to it so that they can succeed. And that's important because people like to go there, and hopefully, going there and coming back, they'll spend some money in the city of Series besides just there. But the real question is this. The citizen calls in and complains, and the and code enforcement is busy doing something else, and they're not able to verify it. Does anything happen to that? That's all.
So Councilmember Casey, basically, the code enforcement, or whoever responds and gets the call, respond out there. Either the music gets turned down. If it doesn't, then they can issue a citation, or they can give them the warning at the time. If they return back that same night, then they'll probably be issuing a citation, and they'll be followed up with community development, because now they're in violation of the conditional use.
All right, Brett had his button pressed.
Vice Mayor. Thank you. Thank you for all the, whatever, like, two years' worth of work the staff has done on this. I, looking at this, reading it extensively, very detailed, and looking back at some of the notes when we've talked about this in the past, I think the staff did a great job with their recommendations to the planning commission. When I, when and if I get to make a motion, the only thing that I see could be an issue, and this should just out of consistency, is I would make a motion at that point when I do that we change the amplified music times to Sunday through Thursday till ten and Friday and Saturday, Saturday till eleven. That would be the same as our only other outdoor amplified music bought in the county, which is the fruit yard. That's what their agreement with the county is. I have no other questions or comments at this time.
No, he was just, he was saying that when he does.
You would want to say something first.
You had something to say.
We can always do discussion after. I just wanted to confirm from my understanding from you, and maybe it's TJ that may do the clarification. Would it be kind of the same as what we do with home events? We would how we treat the noise violations now at night violations, as well as with some of the illegal vendors, and I know in that area, I've had some people, I guess, renting out their parking lots or their front yards for five dollars. So I was just wondering if it's kind of, because I know it took several months to get that resolved, and I was just wondering if it's kind of the same process. It's not something that
The quick answer for me, yes, it's identical. It'll take some time. It's not going to happen overnight, but we can deal with it, yes.
I was just wondering if Nelson, I know that Vice Mayor made a suggestion. Does that sound feasible to you, sir?
Pardon me?
Does his recommendation, would that align with the the change that, I know you proposed a separate change, but do you think that sounds fair for his request?
Yes, that sounds fair, Mr. Mayor, and one additional item that I wanted to make sure, if you're going to feed and approve the appeal with whatever changes you may want to do, one of the other things is, we need to make sure that the permissions for the use of the property with these uses is allowed during the build out period, because we have a period of construction of some of the items that are going to go on in different parts of the Erematito, and so therefore, our, in fact, we would ask to prevent the usage during the build out period. Because there's some restrooms that are going to be built out there. There's going to be some additional fire hydrants. Obviously, there's going to be some material that's going to put in the overflow parking, and there's going to be some fencing that's going to have in the interior of the parcels. We ask that we be allowed to use it during that build out period.
Okay, that sounds good.
Once it's approved, basically immediately,
You're good.
Everything that's approved will be okay for you to do what you got to do within those hours and reasonable. Once it's approved, basically immediately, everything that's approved will be okay for you to do what you got to do within those hours and reasonable times.
One correction to that. So typically, when a CUP comes in new, but use isn't there. They don't operate and do their use until their use is constructed and built out. Currently, the flea market exists and they have conditions that are dependent upon a built out site. What Nelson is suggesting is that there are some fire safety measures that are looked at, that are in place when the site is permanently constructed. Currently, the fencing, that fire, and I'll ask fire if they would like to weigh in, that are put in place for safety during those special events. Those fences don't exist today. So allowing them to function without some sort of site plan with, until they're built out. I would defer to fire to make sure that they're comfortable with that, since that's not really addressed in the permit conditions. So when we do a T U P, we review temporary fencing. The suggestion right now is that there is no review and there's no oversight. And you're operating as if those permanent features are in. So I just want to make sure that fire, because I'm assuming that that means they're not going to be requesting inspection. When would they want to review their fire safety? If those permanent fencing exits and entrances aren't in place, what do we do in the interim? I just want to make sure that's clear for fire.
I think some of these things were discussed before, before you came on, on board. But obviously, Mr. Wise, would you like to chime in?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. With me this evening is our M S D Fire Marshal, Chief Bickle. So I'll let him weigh in on this subject.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Yes, to the point of a CUP and how it typically operates. The proposal is to put in new fencing to limit the, the new taco truck, the food park and an event center. So that fencing would actually preclude us from using any hydrants that currently exist. And then also the fencing being there with people on site would limit their egress. So if something bad or devastating were to happen, then how are we going to get those folks out? The same alignment is new hydrants over by the parking. There's no hydrants that are available to us. So part of the build out is to install hydrants. So I could see a metered approach, but we definitely would like to see some of those life safety features in place before they're given authority to operate.
Mr. Mayor, if I may respond, we had a meeting with fire, with staff. At which time, fire said that it would be okay, there would be a period of time for us to build the additional. There's only going to be one fire hydrant that's going to be in the area where the Grubhub and where all the events are going to take place. Which is inside of the fencing area, which we agreed with fire in a meeting in February of this year. And we are going to be building that as well as building the exterior fire hydrants that are going to go along Pedro Marquez Avenue. Even in the areas where the overflow parking will take place. So, but we discussed the fact that the fire hydrants are not going to be allowed, I mean, they're not going to be there on day one. We've all, I want to make sure that staff, I mean, excuse me, City Council knows that we have used that particular area in previous years. For special events with temporary fencing. And there hasn't been any issues with regards to that particular celebration. For example, Mexican Independence Day, we have been celebrating it there for about 14 years. And there hasn't ever been any issues with regards to that at a different location originally. But it has been celebrated at this particular event since after COVID. So we believe that we will try to do the build outs as soon as possible, especially in that area where the, where the events are taking place. But with temporary use permits, we have, and with the blessing of the fire departments. We have go ahead and gone ahead and used that area for special events in the last few years.
I have a question for the fire marshal. When you asked for access to the fire hydrant, what kind of access do you need for that fire hydrant?
The fire hydrant where the Grubhub?
Existing, existing fire hydrant.
I'm sorry, I guess I don't understand.
Was there, is there an existing fire hydrant there currently?
There's an existing fire hydrant out on Crow's Landing Road, I believe.
On the road, but not on the inside?
But not on the inside.
So you were asking, I just want to make sure I clarify.
And we're, we tried to work with the developer to put that fire hydrant as close to that hydrant, but on the inside where we would have access. Especially since part of the use of this facility would be bringing in, I think, up to 20 taco trucks. That are self-propelled, gas-powered, and then also have propane. So they have a high propensity to catch fire. To speak to the comment of other events out there, other events have taken place. And each one of those events has had a fire inspection previous to being approved for use.
So I guess my question is, with the fire hydrant being on Crow's Landing Road, do you have access to that fire hydrant? And access to the Grubhub if there were to be trucks in there temporarily until they have, until they build out the second hydrant?
No.
So could you explain to me how you wouldn't have access so I can get a better clear understanding?
So there's a fence that precludes the use of that fire hydrant. So Series Municipal Code requires fire hydrants to be every 300 feet in a commercial area. So as it was developed originally, from my perspective, it was a parking lot. Now you're actually bringing in mobile food vendors, you're bringing in other structures that now those hydrants don't exist in there. And so when we start getting away from the 300 feet, we're somewhere up to potentially 600 to 700 feet away from a fire hydrant. So we're not meeting the municipal code from that standpoint. And fire hydrants need to be along paths of travel. So a single stick of five-inch hose, which is how we get a hydrant to give the engine water, is about 100 feet long, holds about 800 gallons. So it gets pretty heavy pretty quick. So for us to try and maneuver it over a fence, it's virtually impossible. And then to start putting a lot of hose on the ground just delays time.
Yeah, that makes sense. And if there was a temporary access to that location, would that be permitted?
A temporary access.
As in, as in a physical gate that would allow you to enter that location from the outside?
It's something we could certainly consider. It was never brought up, so.
I'm just kind of throwing things out there just to kind of try to make sure we meet in the middle. Because I kind of do agree with you in regards to the fire hydrant and the access. But if there's a way that you guys can work that out temporarily, I think that would be a great way to try to find a solution.
We certainly could talk about that. One of the other aspects is that that's only one hydrant that we're speaking of. There's other hydrants that are required on Marquez Market Road, I'm sorry.
Pedro Marquez Avenue.
Thank you. With the overflow parking, where this site and the event is going to take place, it is taking up part of the parking. So now we're moving vehicles off-site into a place that does not have fire hydrants. And so that was one of the requirements that we needed, was a fire access road with hydrants in case an emergency happens out there with vehicles to be able to put out a fire.
I do want to mention that the area where the Grubhub is, the area where the night market and the special events. No additional use of the overflow parking would be permitted. Because most of those events are going to take place when the other El Rematito activities are not in effect. And so there will only be allowing of the parking in the paved area that is the current parking lot or El Rematito. So there will not be, in the use of those particular cases, there will not be any kind of parking out in the overflow. For purposes of the fire department, it won't be any different than if they were using the El Rematito as they currently are permitted to do so. So we're not going to be using that overflow parking during the use of these particular uses on, in the area where those three new uses are going to be allowed.
I have a question for Nubia. Do you think that this additional request could be postponed and we just passed the actual request that is here today?
So as to the specific fire safety issues.
Yes.
My recommendation would be as part of the action to provide some direction. So your options as to this item could be to spell out the fire safety requirements that you want built out during the interim phase as part of your action. You could also direct that staff work with the applicant to finalize those. Again, but with some, some direction as to what the council will allow or not allow.
Yeah.
Or complete, or say, no, the idea is that you can operate your full use for the CUP on day one if we approve it. So those are really the three ways you can look at it.
What is the timeline for the build out, Nelson?
We are hoping that we can build it out as, within six months. The one that's going to take the longest is going to be the construction of the restrooms that are going to be there as well as that fire hydrant. But we believe that within 180 days, that will be constructed.
Is there an opportunity from the fire department to come up with a temporary solution that you guys can work out?
Well. There are other fire hydrants in the area where El Rematito currently operates inside. There are some gates that are preventing any kind of access onto that area from this new area where we have. Maybe if there could be an access to those fire hydrants that are on the other, on the other operation of the El Rematito. During the, these particular events, then maybe that would help the fire department. We're more than happy to work with the fire department to make sure that there are no issues with regards to the use of that area. We just want to make sure that we do have the ability to do so while the build out is taking place.
So that can, that can be sorted out between them two after today, correct?
You can. And as part of the action that you can make with an explanation that in the event that the applicant and staff are unable to mutually agree on a, what I'll call an interim solution. For some of these issues, it can be brought back to the council separately.
On that particular item.
Right, on that particular item, so as not to hold up the entire item.
Because we want to make sure that you begin to operate the way you guys want to operate and just resolve that one extra additional issue. So I want to make sure that fire safety is the number one priority on that ground. And I believe, Nelson, you guys believe the same. If there, I'm not there with the rulers, I can't dictate how far the other hydrants are to that area that needs to be covered. But if that is the case and it's cut and dry, then obviously it's cut and dry. But if it's more complicated, then obviously I would depend on the fire department to come up with a solution on that. Does that sound fair to you?
Yes.
I guess I'll leave it up to Vice Mayor to do that motion.
Move to approve with the original times, etc., through all four conditions set up by the city staff. With one change, that the amplified music be until 10 o'clock on Sunday through Thursday and 11 o'clock on Friday and Saturday. Also, approval must, we must have approval from fire that they have access during this temporary use time until all of the build out is finished. And in my words, you can't have special events there until the fire department says it's okay, they have enough access to water.
Absolutely, I'm happy to second.
No, go ahead.
Can you, can you please repeat the time for the sounds? Because it seemed like a day was left out.
Sunday through Thursday till 10 o'clock, Friday and Saturday 11 o'clock.
Make sure Fallon gets that right. There's a first and a second roll call.
Councilmember Casey?
Yes.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silvera?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0 with one absent.
Thank you to the applicants for coming here today.
And thank you to fire for being so flexible and being able to work with them to, let's make this happen. Like Mr. Casey said, we want to be successful. We're trying to do whatever we can. This has been a huge, long process. So let's get to the point where they can do the things that our citizens are going to love out there.
Okay, moving on to item number eight. Orders number 20, ordinance number 2024, amending the Title 15 Building and Construction, Chapter 8 California Fire Code of the Series Municipal Code to adopt the 2022 California Fire Code. This goes to Chief Wise.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you, this evening is an ordinance, as you mentioned, amending Title 15 Building and Construction, Chapter 8 of the California Fire Code. Last June, the City of Series adopted, as it does every three, California Fire Code along with amendments that provide further protection for the city. As of the 22 Fire Code was adopted, there were some minor changes to some of the code sections that needed to be added in order to provide greater fire protection. As well as making direction to correct date of the code that we were adopting, listed as 2019. But with that, I'll.
Okay, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to make a comment on this item? Any emails?
No emails received.
Seeing no one's hand raised, we'll now close the public hearing and bring this back to the council. Tell them your questions.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Yes.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silvera?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0 with one absent.
Moving on to new business. Authorizing the withdrawal from the program and termination of the agreement between the City of Series, the City of Modesto, and the County of Stanislas regarding the Toolumi River Regional Park. Doug, this one's yours. It was actually to Nubia.
It's going to be Nubia's.
This one's yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Before you tonight is a resolution for your consideration to formally submit a notification to, to TRIP. This is the Toolumi River Regional Park Authority and Agency that oversees this project for termination of participation in this program. This program originally was, the city began participating in this back in the 70s. And it has developed over time with the idea of a partnership with the county and the city and Modesto to develop this regional park area. There has been changes over time to the structure of the organization and the way that it works. But essentially, it gives more responsibilities to some of the other agencies and I think more management and maintenance requirements. However, Series is a formal member of this project. However, over time, there's been issues with the annual monetary contributions that are required of each agency. And Series actually has stopped making its annual payments beginning in 2017. And at the time, from what I understand, I think there was a discussion to make it formal, to withdraw potentially. But it doesn't appear that that action was taken formally as required under the agreement. And so that is why we're bringing this item for the council's consideration tonight. There is what I'll call a little bit of a deficit in terms of how much is owed. It's over $200,000. As part of the arrangement in the contract, there's provisions that basically allow the other agencies to absorb costs that are owed in basically property. So if there's monies that are owed, percentages of the land ownership can change. And so there is, there are several things that need to be worked out with the other agencies in order to actually terminate participation in TRIP. The action before you tonight is simply to give that formal notice, to prepare the actual documentation to the agency, to let them know that Series is formally withdrawing. With the idea that it also authorizes the city manager to work with the respective lead individuals for those respective agencies. To figure out the best way to resolve the monetary component. And then that's something that we'd be informing the council of as the process continues. But essentially, the idea behind this was that the council took a little bit of a step back in prioritizing participation in TRIP over the years. Unfortunately, that number has grown because no formal action has been taken. And so that is what we're bringing for you to consider tonight to take that form. for you to consider tonight, to take that formal step, to notify them of the city's withdrawal from participation. So with that, I can answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you. The public comment period is now open. Is there anybody in the chambers that would like to make a comment on this item? Seeing none. Was there any emails?
There were no emails received.
I bring this back for discussion. Me and Councilmember Martinez are on this committee and we both, and I can't, I don't want to speak for him specifically. But I feel that it's in, that we should pull out, uh, reinvest into, um, River Bluff, for example, or any other of those matters. And I just don't see any benefit from this, this project in particular. I understand that we have to look at the agreement. I also don't feel we need to, we need to pay two hundred thousands to the City of Modesto. And I, I would not too sure how I feel about this property swap either. I see James Casey button has been pressed. Yeah, you're up.
So, you know, uh, any type of organization, uh, agreement, partnership, you get out of it what you put into it. And I can't disagree with, uh, new mayor, Councilman Martinez. It's too bad that our representative for the last many years isn't here. But what I do disagree with, if we owe them two hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars, we have an obligation to pay that and then get out of it. You know, that's, I'm, I'm sorry, that's the way I was brought up. It's okay when I get out, but you don't get out without paying what you owe. So, uh, and again, I, I, I'm not sure what we could have done differently, how much we participated, but since two thousand seventeen, we've been a member and maybe our representative wasn't listened to very kindly or because we weren't paying our due. That's my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Casey, I, I feel that there's an opportunity to give you some documentation that shows that we have not benefited nothing, nothing at all. So all the projects have been on the Modesto side. Not one project on the City of Series side. So why should we pay them two hundred thousand dollars if they have not been working with us in conjunction to try to benefit our side as well? This is obviously a JPA. This is not something that's just one-sided. Um, Council, uh, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, so we don't have much history with TRIP Park for this group, any of us almost in this room. I believe that when we stopped paying our contribution, it was insinuated, lack for better term, better term, that we were no longer a part of that project. Couple of years ago, it came up that evidently we still were, and they would like to try to recoup some of those funds. I think what we're talking about tonight is officially stepping away from that project. And then giving the city manager and city attorney the ability to try to figure out what we're going to do with that money that they think we owe them. So really what we're talking about tonight is officially stepping out of that project, that, uh, project, and I'll move to approve the resolution, resolution withdrawing from TRIP Park.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Casey.
No.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries three, one with no, one absent.
I do have a question. So if and when you guys get together and figure out this debt that they say we owe, we'll have to approve that plan as well, correct?
If there's action to be taken, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to the council member referrals. Um, item number ten is Zoom participation in city council meetings. This was requested by Vice Mayor Silvera on the April eighth, twenty twenty-four city council meeting to be agendized for this future council meeting for council consideration. And Vice Mayor Silvera will introduce this referral.
Sure. If you remember, there was a time period a couple of months ago where cities and counties and anybody that had a board or held a meeting on a diocese were attacked by a group of, I don't know what to call them, that got on everybody's Zoom uh, meeting request and started spewing out awful things about members of our country. That only lasted literally for about ten days. Um, it really hasn't happened since then. Because of that, our reaction was to no longer let people have comments that were watching on Zoom. I believe there's been enough time. There hasn't been any more of those happenings happening to cities, counties, or whoever. I think it's time to start allowing our uh, people that can't be in the room here, but are willing to log into Zoom or watch these meetings. I think it's time to start allowing them comments again.
Okay, now I now open this item for the public. Is there any members of the public that would like to make a comment? Go ahead, Mr. Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with, uh, Councilman Silvera. Uh, some time has passed and there hasn't been much awareness of this, uh, happening again. Um, going forward, if, um, you approve to reopen comments from Zoom, if the problem creeps up again and takes place, the same thing can happen. You can shut it down and discontinue the comments. But I do believe the public needs access to these meetings if they can't be here and they wish to make comments. Thank you, Mr. Silvera.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Anybody else? Did we receive any emails?
There were no emails received.
Okay, I'll bring this item back for the council. We need discussion and or motion.
So before the council takes action.
Refer, refer, I'm sorry. It's, it's a nod. I'm sorry. My apologies.
Yes, the, the direction would be if the council so wishes to agendize formal action on this at a future meeting.
Okay.
So you're not, so you're not actually voting, uh,
Today.
to bring Zoom back, comments on Zoom. It's, do you want us to bring it back for formal action?
For formal action to take for consensus. So okay, we're all good. Thank you. Okay, with that being said, moving on to reports. I have, I don't want to steal the thunder from, um, Julian. I'll just let him, if he talks about Bridgette Gap, I'll let him do it. Other than that, I have no reports. Vice Mayor?
Unless Rose London was going to talk about it. I just, Daniel's not here. I just wanted to remind everybody that, that concerts in the park start next Tuesday, June fourth at six thirty at Wentmore Park.
Oh, okay. You might have forgot, actually. That's okay. No worries. Okay, with that being said, is city manager, anything? City manager, my apologies, sir. I need some more coffee. City, city manager over here, Nubia, don't, don't even think about it. Yes or no?
I have nothing to report. That's the attorney.
City attorney?
I'm definitely not the city manager, and I have nothing to report.
Awesome. Departments, departments on the list.
This is from Economic Development. We do bridging the gap. That will, uh, be happening on Thursday, May thirtieth from nine AM to three PM. So we have, uh, four guest speakers that will be there. We do have four breakout sessions. Um, one of them is how to conduct and do business in the City of Series. We have Stanislaus, uh, environmental, uh, resources that will be there, those individuals that are wanting, opening up, uh, like food trucks or street vendors. Um, and then we have, uh, two other ones from, um, financial literacy and an HR. So looking forward to this great event.
All right, anybody else? Okay, chief, you sure? This meeting is now adjourned. Everybody have a blessed day. We're going on to closed session. We can adjourn. We have to go to closed session. Where's that coffee, by the way? We will now adjourn this meeting and go to closed session for a conference regarding labor negotiators, California Government Code five four nine five seven, agency designated representatives, our city manager, Douglas D. Dumford, and human resources director, Delilah Vasquez. Employees of Organizations are a serious police officer association, first line supervisors, confidential bargaining group, Laborers International Union of the North, America Launa, and mid managers Barney Group, and public safety managers. Is there anyone in the public who would like to make a comment in regards to any of the closed session items? Any emails? Okay, we will, we will. What was that? If you, if you'd like to make a comment on closed session, yeah, go ahead.
Not that it makes a difference, um, but there was nothing on the agenda about a closed session tonight. And so we out here had no way of knowing that. Thank you.
Is that the copy that you got? We'll double check to make sure that the copy that's online.
I didn't see on the lawn, online one either, but, but.
It is online. Sorry, Mr. Warren.
Welcome back everyone, direction has been provided. Thank you.